Discussion on the board by the board and directors.
I too, just yesterday, I saw one dark gray Lake Model Acura go by from the Edelweiss Pass in front of the Zurich at at least 25, 30 miles an hour, go past the stop sign at the edge of the Zurich and just blew right by, didn't even slow down, didn't slow down at the other stop, went through three stop signs as if they weren't there, at at least two to three times the the posted speed limit. That is an absolute danger to the community. I believe the idea of putting in these speed bumps is a safety issue and it it outweighs and it is more important than the than the upgrades to the renovations to the building. Bear in mind, I'm in the Zurich building, not one nickel has been spent yet on any renovations to the Zurich building, but I'm willing to put that back a bit in order to get these, an effective speed deterrent system put in. So I am very strongly in favor of installing speed bumps at appropriate spaces to slow people down.
My argument with Jerry when he first reached the subject with me is that I love the idea, but we don't have the money. And I have come to the conclusion also like Marvin, that I have been a little bit more watchful since since this subject has come up and it's very evident that we need to do things, slow down the traffic in the village and get them to be attentive when they're driving. When you reach a speed bump, trust me, trying to talk in your telephone and navigating over a speed bump is not very easy. So you would have some degree of more safety or safely driven automobiles. Do we have the money? I think it's a it's a matter like Marvin said, that this is such an important matter for the safety of our village, that maybe we should consider looking for the money and 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 getting it done. We have the quotes and I think it's a necessity. I don't agree with Jerry that we only put them in little areas because if you take the stretch between the clubhouse and the Heidelberg and you only put one speed bump in, that's not going to happen. They're going to speed up, see the speed bump, slow down, and then pick up again after the speed bump. What you really need is a speed bump at each stop sign and in the middle of each building. In that way, you actually do slow the traffic down and people do pay, when they come to a stop sign, trust me, they're not going to go blow through it, they'll have to stop or at least considerably slow down on it. Any other comments from the board? Yes, Francis, go ahead.
Yeah, it's really very unfortunate. When we first installed the stop signs, we put them in thinking the people would stop as a matter of courtesy and we didn't pay too much attention to the Lauderdale or the state regulations. And a few years ago, we were told by the Lauderdale police that if we would bring our stop signs to regulation, they would patrol our streets and help us keep traffic down. We did improve the stop signs, we made them regulation, but unfortunately, the Lauderdale police don't have the manpower perhaps at the time, they do not come into the village on a regular basis. They come if you call them, but I mean, they promised that they would patrol the village and they've never kept their promise. I live in New Yorkshire and it's worth your life sometimes to try to cross the street to get to the other side of the lot just to get to your car. I've been run down or almost run down more times than I can tell you. We do have young people who pay no attention at all to the speed limit, the fact that people are walking on the streets. It's really very, very unfortunate and I don't know if you guys have had the same experience, but when I've had the opportunity to call to somebody's attention that there's a stop sign, I get a finger or a rude word or something like that. So I don't like, I don't like to have to spend the money either, but I do like to cross the street once in a while. So I I think that we should seriously consider what we can afford and see what we can do.
Any, Collette?
I agree.
Okay, all right. Yes, go ahead.
Earlier, I had stopped at the city hall and I asked if there were any city regulations governing speed bumps within Lauderdale. And the document that I was given basically said that the only speed bump that is allowed are the are not are the asphalt ones, basically 12 feet long, 12 feet as you go over them, up to about three inches high and whatever the width necessary. These rubber or plasticized ones apparently would not be approved by the city and according to the the engineer that I spoke to, we would have to submit, we would have to get permits for the installation of speed bumps, so they do, they do have oversight. That's, that's what I was told by the city. I've heard all the comments that we should just put in what we want to and come what may, but I don't, I don't know, we'll deal with that when we, when we get to an actual vote on an actual proposal.
Marvin, they're too expensive anyway.
Right, they're about a third to a half to 50% more expensive.
Much more expensive, we're not going to, even though they have some advantages for bicycle riders, we're not going to spend that kind of money at all there.
I'd like, is it proper for us to make a motion about the speed bumps? Yes, we understand that. Well, we have, we have the two paving bumps companies have come in, one quoted $20,000, the other one $24,000 and change.
But why does it mean I keep seeing bumps and not humps?
No, it's humps, it should be humps, not bumps.
There's a big difference.
Yeah, there's a big difference between a hump and a bump. Yes, Eve?
There are ways we can save the money by having a little less than the 20 humps.
Of course, Eve, there's, of course you can save money, but if it's not effective, why save the money?
Kind of agree with Jerry that you can reduce the number, if you go in and drive the street, I don't know the length, I don't know the distance between the street, but it works pretty good and this is on a public road with trucks or whatever, you can go over it with a good suspension. In our, I don't know the length either of the road in the, in the village, but there are crucial spots, no question, spots that the stop sign, that the triors, a joke, they go merge all the way to the Marseille, it's a joke, in front, Zurich and all this, but there's not many, I don't know who really studied how many humps you need, I know you need them, I'm all in favor of them and I'd do it tomorrow if I could, but 20 seems a lot for the length of the road.
Well, you got to remember, ladies and gentlemen, that we're only, not only talking about the front of the buildings, but there's a race course behind the Marseille, there is another race course behind the Orleans and the Grenoble that also need to be addressed. So we have 11 buildings, we have 11 buildings, and if you only put one hump in front of every building, that's 11 humps, and then you probably need another five or six behind the Marseille, the Grenoble, and the Orleans. So you're not, you're not very far from the 20, you're just not.
You know, certain areas are probably more important than others because they have more traffic, okay? Once you get into the far reaches, you only have those people living there to deal with, okay? So certain areas are, have more traffic than others. And there's nothing wrong with starting out with 10 or 12 and then putting another 10 or 12 in later on if you find there's certain areas that are a problem. Maybe the speed bumps that you put in will wake up the drivers to realize they can't speed, you know? I don't know, I mean, you can, you can always add.
I think, I think this is what we should do, this is my opinion, this is what we should do. We all agree that we need to have speed bumps, what we don't agree is how many number, with what number. So I think what we need to do is reexamine exactly the number we need. I'm going to make a motion that we table this until such time as we have a better understanding, please Wendy, I saw your, I saw your hand, thank you, and make a study of exactly the number of humps we do need as a minimum for safety and then start from there. Is that agreeable to the board?
It sounds good, the only thing, I think there should be a date certain, you know, not just whenever, I think certain by the next board meeting.
I agree with you Jerry, we'll make it by the next board meeting. We'll make the study and we'll have it all, the information ready for the next board meeting in April.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I think part of that study ought to, ought to also have to do with prioritization.
Meaning what?
Meaning that this month, whether you heard my absentee report or not, we were $100,000 in deficit. Did you hear that?
That wasn't in your report, Mark.
Yes, it was.
Okay. $36,000, yes.
That's close enough, we'll round it. So we put a lot of faith in the lawyer as to getting us out of trouble, so far that's been non-existent, so far, except for a belt in January. We have a definitive fiscal crisis in this place now. If you're going to start doing things, part of the discussion should be how are we going to pay for it? We have at this point in time, three quarters of a million dollars in the bank. Approximately 300,000 of that is already committed to paying off the special assessment back I want you all to think carefully about this. Nobody wants to do anything or raise fees or assessments or what have you. If you're going to do things, we got to pay for them. I'm all for it, I hope you are too. We can't do it without raising funds and I want you to think about that carefully as this is part of the discussion. The most important thing of all is prioritization. We have lots of things to do as Mr. Fitzpatrick has said, the buildings, some buildings need some work, that has to be done. Are we going to put the speed bumps first? It's extremely important for people to knuckle down and get to the bottom of what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. There's a fiscal part of this discussion that's very important now and it's going to become more difficult as we go along, there's no question in my mind. We've lived off the fat of the land for three and a half, maybe four years, maybe five. The paycheck is coming due, everyone knows that, but no one thinks it's going to happen, sort of like the US government. It just keeps going and growing and growing. So please, part of the discussion is fiscal responsibility on this issue. We're going to spend $25,000 or $50,000 putting speed bumps in here. Let's raise the money, I think, as opposed to taking it out of what we've got already, which we don't know how much we have or how much we're going to have three or four months from now, it's uncertain. So I put that out to you as this is important as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate that.
Charlie, quickie, I thought of that also and I think the one, one way, one place we could look is somehow, I don't know how many grass cuttings we have and they do a good job, but if that in a quarter, for example, how many grass cuttings we have in a quarter?
We have, we have together 26 cuttings.
Okay, so we, in a quarter, we have six, we have six, all right. Right. Okay, but that's a possibility that we could have instead of six cuttings a quarter, we could have five cuttings a quarter and we could save some of that big bucks.
Well, you guys, you guys, that's what this study is.
Right, we're looking.
This study talks about the financials as well as looking into them.
Exactly right, exactly right.
So the study encompasses Mark's concerns as well as, and then it's presented, here's where we can pull the money and then here's what will cost.
Thank you, Collette.
We have to put on that equation, how much is the life of a three-year-old that crosses the road and is knocked over?
And that is very important too.
How much is that worth?
Yeah, we will, we will do our very best, Mark and I, we'll squeeze every dime we can and we'll see where we can cut and hopefully collections will pick up. Certainly, we will not raise $600,000 this year in, in collections. However, at the same time, there, we've been fortunate that some of our expenses have, have come down somewhat and hopefully by this time next month, we'll have a better understanding and better answers for everybody regarding this. If that's the case too, we need to do the same things for, for items number 14 and items number 15. We also need to have a study of our dollars and cents, although if the board wants to discuss the building renovations and the hiring of new personnel, tonight I'm willing to continue. First of all, let's make a motion on the installation of speed bumps, if you don't mind. I'd like to table this and make a motion to table speed bumps.
There was no motion.
I'm sorry?
There was no motion, there was just a discussion.
There was a discussion.
No, you don't have to do it.
There was a discussion, that's fine. The same thing in number 14, do we discuss the building renovations? Jerry?
But I, I think a motion would be in order to make sure that we come back to the table next month, otherwise if we just discuss it, there's no, no evidence to.
I just was correcting, I hate doing anything that was no motion, because remember I asked.
I'd like to make a motion and we'd like to make a motion to table.
No, make a motion to, to do a feasibility and cost study on the installation of speed bumps in the community.
Well said.
Whatever. So someone else want to second that?
Carrie, she did second it. Any objections? Okay. Thank you, Collette. I guess we'll get to everything.
Motion to do a feasibility study and financial.
And cost study.
Cost study for the installation of speed bumps in the community.
Thank you.
I'd like to move on, any objections, Carrie? Thank you. Building renovations, the continued building renovations, we have, I believe we still have a number of, of, I'm sorry Wendy, you had something to say? Go ahead, thank you.
Before the motion of the speed bump.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to ask, it would be possible to impose fines to the people who are speeding and that would also help raising funds?
To catch, to catch the speeders, you would have to violate your own rules.
Why?
Because you'd have to speed after them to catch them.
You, no, no, we've seen it, I've seen it, and somebody almost riding over.
Any information you get about consistent drivers that are, are driving too quick, the only thing you can do is take their license number down if you want, bring in the complaint to the office and see legally what we can do.
Charles?
Yes.
I was actually going to say.
Excuse me, I can't hear.
I was actually going to say, if the board started implementing the fines, i.e. like it says on the board, dog owners or dogs which haven't been registered up to $5,000, if it's true what people are saying, there's possibly 50 illegal dogs, we've got, then got the money for this.
But, but sir, that's exactly what we're doing, that's what Marvin said, that we are going to start doing the violations. We are sticking to our rules and regulations and that's what Marvin tried to explain to you before.
No, that's fine, because they've never been implemented before.
Right, well, we are starting to implement it. Thank you. Would you move on to the discussion of the building renovations?
Can I ask something?
Yes, go ahead, Collette.
I have, you know, be, no, I have no idea where this is at. I would love to bring this up like at next meeting where we have a cost breakdown per building, what has been done, what's proposed to be done. I can't intelligently discuss renovations because I don't even know where we're at. Some buildings have been touched, others haven't, so if we could get something like that, then yeah, let's discuss it because I think that's a huge issue.
That's the reason I wanted to put it on the agenda tonight, to really start a discussion. This was not the vote whether we're going to go ahead and do it.
I know, but I can't talk.
We have a pretty good understanding what the other buildings are. We've got a cost breakdown so far, but there are buildings, excuse me, there are buildings that don't need the same type of renovations that the other buildings have done. So we, George and I have started to look at the buildings and started to discuss what needs to be done and what not to be done, what can be saved. So that's, I think, what we should have for the next meeting is a pretty good breakdown building by building, what each building should be done and what costs at what cost. Okay, that's a great idea.
You say, you say you would have cost breakdown of the work that has been done?
I have a cost breakdown for every building. Now, how accurate those costs are, Jerry, I cannot attest to that, but we do have the figures. Correct, Maureen?
Yes.
Yes.
Just floating out the concept, you know, in my mind, since we're all equals, all the buildings are the same, the same size, the same number of units, it would appear to me that an equal, I know, I heard what you said about looking to see what work has to be done and I agree with that, okay? But as far as dollars are concerned, it would seem to me that the same amount of dollars, even though it might be different work, should be spent on each of the units, is that a fair concept?
That is a very fair concept and an honest, an honest concept, but the reality is, in today, the way the financial situation of the village is, can we afford to be fair and honest with every building? That's the question. There are some buildings that will need, for instance, I'm not going to name them, but there are two buildings, in our opinion, both George and I, that don't need their carpets to be replaced, for instance.
Well, I understand that, but if they don't need their carpets, that means there's money that they can use for something else. What you're saying is, if they don't need carpets, we're going to save the money.
That's correct, Jerry.
And not spend it. I'm saying that that in the community is really not a fair concept, I don't think, and, and that's why I never felt that complete building should have been done. Everybody's lobby should have been done, everybody's laning should have been done. Once that was done, then you could see what money's left over, instead of putting all the money in certain buildings and leaving other buildings undone. But now you're suggesting, if I understand you correctly, to find how we can cut corners in the buildings that weren't done, and I don't think that's fair, I think the money is set aside.
It's not fair, it's not fair, but, but it's my responsibility, it's my responsibility to, to at least present to the board the alternatives.
Well, didn't we just all say we would be willing to take out of the renovation device speed bumps?
Right.
Yeah, well, the speed bumps, that's fair, because speed bumps for the whole community, that's for everybody.
But Jerry, that's, we're not just going to take the money and throw it away, we're going to do it for other things like this.
This is a discussion, let's, let us write the report. We will bring to the board what it would cost to do a complete building as the other buildings have been done and we'll also bring a shortcut budget.
It's just a question of dollars. To me, it's a question of dollars, telling us how much dollars were spent on the buildings that were completed.
Right.
Okay, that's really where it's at. And then seeing what kind of dollars we have and seeing if we can divide, at least now going forward, maybe the six buildings that aren't done, we can divide the money amongst the six, instead of throwing money into the next one and then the poor two or three at the end are going to get buckets, you know? So it wasn't planned properly from the beginning. Certain buildings were favored and money was spent on them and thrown at them and without thinking of the rest, and it wasn't done properly. And now you're saying we're going to have to average it out for the other ones that weren't done because of budget considerations.
No, that's not what I said, Jerry. My understanding, my understanding. What I said is that we will be bringing to the board two alternatives. One is a fair and honest policy and the other one is where can we save? That's all. And it'll be up to the board to make the decision which way to go. But I think that physically, physically, fiscally, we have a responsibility to at least look at taking shortcuts when, where and if we can, that's all. Good? Do we need, so, next meeting?
Yeah. Is there, excuse me, interior decorator, is he or she the same for any?
There is no interior decorator.
Because I have a chance to have a look at one specially that was renovated and the entrance is just full of too many items, that's costed quite a bit and it's no good, not good taste, too many things.
Right, but each building was, was, was done up by a committee. Number of people in that committee, we don't know, but it was a decision of by, by the owners of each building.
Charles, maybe that's a partial solution, we could borrow some of that stuff for other buildings.
Oh, that's right, we could.
Strip them, strip them and, yeah, and share around, okay.
Good, so that's what will be done, we'll bring to the board, next meeting, a cost breakdown for each building, honest and fair, and what I like to call a fiscal responsible budget also, okay? Thank you. Discuss new personnel, I'm going to bring this up because I really work the village on a day-to-day basis, you guys see me strutting around, and we're doing a great job with, with very few people. And the two areas that we're suffering the most, one is their housekeeping, housekeeping is literally not being done properly and the reason, there's two reasons. One, some of the personnel are not up to scratch and two, we're asking one individual to take on the responsibility of too many buildings to take care of. So what we need to do is hire one more housekeeper and review the personnel that we have now, ones that we're not satisfied with, we will replace. George, myself and Maureen have already had this discussion, they're all in agreement. However, we do need the new personnel, one, hire one more individual. And also true for our maintenance, we are short maintenance, we're scrambling every, every, every day. I've been noticing things that need to be done that just haven't been done because we don't have the personnel to pull out. Mr. Tercini pointed out to me that some of the posts outside in this room who needed to be painted and absolutely right, except that when I went out there to inspect this morning, on the outside of the fences need to be painted, they need to be scraped and painted. And if you don't do that, then you're in big trouble because it rots and then you have to replace and that's a lot more costly. So sometimes you need to be cost efficient and we're not doing it because I, we have people doing plastering work in, in the, in the interlocking or paint or wallpaper, whatever the case may be, and they're not doing our preventive and regular maintenance because we're short of staff. So I'm going to recommend to the board that we hire one more household and one more maintenance personnel. And you're probably talking of a total of around $50,000 a year, about 50 with the burden for two people.
So, so we're currently spending approximately 25,000 for each maintenance person and 35,000 for each housekeeper?
That's about right, just about right, yeah. I mean, it's off by a few hundred dollars.
So essentially a little over $4,000 if you want more.
Yeah.
Basically going in a hole or nothing like that, right now we're going in a hole from what Mark said. Basically going in a hole or nothing like that. Right now, we're going in a hole, from what Mark said.
That's right. We're running in the deficit right now. And what we're doing is adding to the deficit, and, uh, it's, 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 I'm sorry.
It's a very, very, very difficult decision. Uh, we don't have the money, and yet, we need the personnel. So it's a very, 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 very difficult situation. Uh, can we wait another month? Can we wait another month or two? Probably. We probably could. We probably could wait another thirty days, sixty days. But this, this is not gonna go away. This is not gonna go away.
Charles, it seems to me that this really is part of the renovation conversation. Because the reason we don't have the personnel to do the normal things is because the personnel is right now tied up in renovations. So you're hiring new people for the normal things that we all deserve and expect. And it's only because those people are tied up in renovations that we're tabling the conversation until we get all the numbers. You know, so to me, it sounds like you need to take the people that are doing the renovations and put them into the work that you're short of, until we get a renovation picture.
Right. However, uh, household has nothing to do with renovations.
I thought the personnel are being used for, you're talking about cleaning.
Right, 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 our cleaning.
And they're not being used for.
Renovation, no, they are not. They are not.
I, I am not in favor of adding another person to the maintenance, to the maintenance staff. I think that the renovations, part of looking into the cost of the further renovations should include, uh, hiring outside, uh, firms to do the work. Uh, I do not feel that we're getting the best value by using our maintenance people to paint and roll paper and lay tile. Uh, that aside, so I'm not in favor of adding personnel to the maintenance, but the housekeeping definitely needs another hand. The number of buildings and the clubhouse are such that the present staff is incapable of doing their assigned duties. We also have a couple who, uh, are just inefficient in any manner, and they do have to be weeded out. But, uh, and, and that has to be done soon as well. But we do need the extra housekeeper. Uh, I think it's extremely important that the buildings be clean. All of us are complaining, um, that the, the, uh, the floors are dirty, the carpets are not being vacuumed. You see a piece of paper lying in the hallway and stays there for six weeks. And this is not the kind of atmosphere that we bought into. So the housekeeping has definitely got to be taken care of immediately. Uh, the maintenance personnel is something that's got to be considered, along with hiring people to do the renovation.
Uh, thank you, um, thank you. Yes.
Uh, as of right now, how many maintenance people are we using for renovations? And are they, are they being used full-time for the renovations, or part-time?
Depends on the work that has, that's being done. Right. Uh, for instance, uh, if you're laying tile, then we're using three individuals from our maintenance people. If you're painting, we're taking two. Uh, so it really depends on, uh, what work is being done.
So how many buildings right now are being, um, are using, how many buildings are we renovating, using our maintenance people?
One. 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 And, and, but still, Marvin, uh, even if you take one guy off the regular maintenance, it affects the regular maintenance.
But, but right now, what you're taking, what you're saying is, some days we're taking three off, right, maintenance, some days we're taking two off, some days one.
That's correct. And, uh, I'll give you an example. Some days, a whole week, almost ten days, uh, we had, I pulled five guys off the renovations to complete the idolize.
The renovations of what, two people?
Uh, the, uh, the inside of the lobby, uh, the, uh, the, the sprucing up of the outside, that had been basically neglected for years.
You pulled them out of where?
Interlocking.
Okay.
I took them off the renovation job with George, and put them into another area to do maintenance.
Okay. Is it, since I, I don't, I don't know the mechanics of getting all these things done. Is it possible to assign, it doesn't have to be three people doing tile? Can it be done with one, two?
Uh, well, you need somebody to lay the tile, to cut the tile, and if you only have one person doing it, it will take you six months to lay tile? Okay? So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's basically a time efficiency.
Okay. If, if, if man towel were not an issue, how long would it take to finish interlocking?
We have it scheduled now to be finished by the fifteenth of April.
So, a month?
Yeah, it's gonna take us a month to finish the, at, at, at the current pace.
So at, so at the current pace, as of April fifteenth, we will not, we will then have a full complement of maintenance people.
Correct. Correct.
Will that be enough?
Sure. Our present maintenance, um, crew is enough to maintain our regular maintenance. The problem is, is that you're taking people out to do renovations, and maintenance suffers. It's a shuffling, it's a shuffling of personnel.
I hear. So if we have to pull an occasional maintenance person out of interlocking, it may go to, to the middle of maintenance?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a suggestion.
Go ahead, Collin.
Um, since we're gonna be relooking, looking at the renovation, barring anything that is not, you know, that's unsafe, why don't we table renovations at this point? Get the maintenance staff back doing maintenance that we so dearly need, until we really look at it and decide what we're gonna do going forward. And then maybe we won't need those people to do the renovation. We will hire professional, you know? But, I mean.
That's not a bad idea, but.
Obviously, if tile's not done, you can't keep tiles.
But the interlocking, you don't leave a building half-done.
Well, you can't.
Interlocking must be finished. It must be finished. Must be finished. You cannot leave it in that, in that, in that, uh, in that condition. Because then you're talking about mold and, uh, you know, exposed, uh, exposed walls that haven't been painted. It's, it's not, not the right way to go, Collin. Finish the building. We have another month to do it. Get it done.
Charlie, can I say something?
Sure, Jerry.
Um, I recommend that you, you hire part-timers, so you don't have to pay them insurance. Twenty-four thousand for a housekeeper, sounds like a lot. I mean, I don't, if you hired like a, a three-quarter time maintenance person, and maybe a twenty-hour a week, you don't have to pay them the benefits. You don't have to pay them that much.
Thank you, Jerry. We'll look into that. Appreciate it. So we have here two things. I think that we'll put aside adding a maintenance individual for at least, uh, a little while, until we have a better understanding of the cost. But, uh, but the housekeeping, we must add, uh, one personnel. And I'd like to put that to a vote.
I begin, I want to take a motion to our one additional housekeeper staff.
Second.
Marvin seconds. Any objections? Motion carried. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our, of our meeting. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The meeting adjourned at 9:25.